Okay, we've made it live. Hey, everyone. Happy Tuesday. And it's Christmas Eve. For those of you that celebrate Christmas, if you celebrate Hanukkah, your days and Kwanzaa is coming up. So, thank you to everyone for joining us on this Tuesday, even though it's we're we're deep in the holiday season. One thing that I know that you can do, if you're not able to join the live, to jump into our Zoom, you could always run this back. Because the information that we're sharing today is so valuable and is so important. And we hope that we can encourage you to be more involved in your local politics. Specifically, you know, our willhouse is education, the school board. But you be involved in all aspects. We have so many things happening that we're going to get into. Again, my name is Camila Bywaters, and I'm so happy to be here with you. I look forward to Tuesdays. And first, let's see how everyone's doing on the call. Rodney, you want to go ahead and introduce yourself? And then Tracy? And then whoever else wants to jump in just to share what's going on? Let's do a check-in moment to see how you're doing, how you're feeling, and what you're looking forward to? Because 2025 is right around the corner.
Oh, my goodness. Hey, everybody. This is Rodney Smith. I'm so happy to be here, talking education as always. A little tough on Christmas Eve. Because, you know, usually that's family time. So I don't know if I'll be here the whole time, and I'll be here as long as I can be. But y'all, let me tell you something. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna break it right here on the news. I did it on Facebook a little bit. I got a call from Ms. Lisa over at the West Las Vegas Art Center. And she said there was a family, young family, lost their mother, and needed to move out of where they were living. They wound up getting another place. They moved out yesterday, but they didn't have any food. I was able to make a couple of phone calls with my contacts, got some food to them last night. Well, I gave it to Ms. Lisa to take to them, and then she said, Rodney, they don't have anything under the tree. Not even sure if they have a tree. So this afternoon, I got on Facebook. I made a message out to the community. About two minutes after I posted it, Ramon Savoy calls. Says, gives me a recommendation. I call up the recommendation. And actually, I called Brian Harris, because Brian Harris had the contact number. Brian Harris called him up. It was actually Mario. Mario says, yes, I will help with getting them toys.
I love that.
So in the process of doing that, Brian said he had some extra toys for his people, and he would give some of his toys. And then, to top it off, Brother Mohammed volunteered to go get it from Brian. And then Brian threw in some pies and some other stuff so they could have some desserts. And man, it just came together. I called the general. The general got a, well, I think the general called me. She reached out somehow, or AK reached out to her. AK provided some bicycles and some toys.
I love that.
Oh, I mean, you're talking about the community coming together. Dr. King talked about the beloved community. I got a chance to be a part and experience that beloved community coming together for those young people. The oldest one is 14, the youngest one is three. It's two girls and two boys. And once every day, a big shout out to Melvin for going to pick up the bicycles and stuff from AK, Brother Mohammed, from bringing this, getting the stuff from Brian, and then helping Ms. Lisa take it to the children, to Ms. Lisa at the West Las Vegas Art Center, for taking an interest in these young people in the first place. Because without her letting us know that there was help needed, they may not have had food, and they may not have had toys on this Christmas. So this was the village coming together for the community. So, big shout out to everybody that was involved in making that happen. I think I got everybody from the general, AK, Ms. Lisa, Brother Mohammed, Sister Gwen Walker from the African American History Museum and Research Center. Just many hands came in and made light work out of this. And so there's some children who tomorrow morning will have, each one of them will have their own bicycle. They have food on the table, and they have toys. So, big shout out to the community for coming together.
I love that. Thank you for sharing that. Big shout out to all of you who were able to make that happen. I love it. I love it. I love it.
Got me all in the Christmas spirit now.
I know, right? Right. Tracy?
Good evening. Happy holidays to everyone. Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, whatever it is that you celebrate. Congratulations, Mr. Rodney, and to all of those who helped you. I love to hear things like that. And that is it for me right now.
Yep. Anyone else want to say something, introduce yourself? Say hi. It's your time to shine. No? Listen, let's get into it. Now, we understand it's Christmas Eve, and I know you have things to do. But the reason that I wanted to do this today is because in January, the new officers, the new trustees will be sworn in. And immediately after that, they will be making selections on who board officers would be. One of my goals for 2025 is to make school boards a priority in the work that we're doing and, you know, preparing for election time. Just paying attention to what's happening on school boards. Because, in my opinion, I feel that we don't pay as a community, as a holistic community. I feel that our school boards have really been under the radar. And this is, to me, well, I'm not going to say it's one of the most important, because there's many, even our judges. Their work is very important. But the decisions that are made on our school boards, they impact our students now. Like, when they make decisions, those decisions impact our students, the teachers, the support staff, and all those that are within the educational community. So what I would like to do is really hone in on paying attention to what's happening, learning together with our community, and being more involved. So that means we're going to go a little bit deeper, calling people out if we need to, and motivating our community to be more involved and to pay attention. My plan this year is to pay attention all across all of our elected officials. I know, Mr. Rodney, we talked last week about the difference between elected official and leaders. Because I've been, I'm like, hey, leaders, well, these are our leaders. And Mr. Rodney was like, well, let's, you know, let's think about that a little bit more. Because not every elected official is a leader. And then I thought about that. It's like, you know what? You're absolutely right. And just because you're not an elected official doesn't mean that you're not a leader. You don't have to be in the elected position to be making moves out here, to be a movement shaker, and to really impact the spaces that you're in. So what I would like for us to do as a community is to build our influence and to build our impact. Okay? And I believe that we can do that. And we have to start by being informed voters. My goal for 2025 is to pay attention to all of our elected officials. Who's out here liberating us and who's out here oppressing us? That's what I'm paying attention to. That's what I'm watching. And we're going to share that information. So we're going to start with our school board. And my hope for us is that we move beyond a people who elect elected officials because they have signs. Signs only, in my opinion, in my opinion. Signs only and no community presence is not running a campaign, guys and girls. And don't get mad. Now, I've had people, somebody texted me when I was in my campaign trail. They were like, Camila, Lola never answered my emails, and she never came. She was never, she was not in the community. Are you going to be different? And I said, hell, I said, hell, yeah. I love community. And one thing that is important to me is that we amplify our voices together. So if you voted for a sign person, that's okay. You voted for a sign person. If that sign person never came out in the community during the campaign, and then we complain, oh, they don't come in the community. Well, because we elected them as a sign person. We didn't elect them as a person who was community engaged and involved. So I really want us to start to pay attention to that. And yeah, I know, you know, people have these names, these legacy names and everything like that. But you would be surprised at the impact and the power that we have as a community. So I'm going to share a screen really quick so we can see who is coming up. Our school board trustees that will be coming up for the new trustees that will be sworn in. And then we'll look at our old trustees. And then we'll talk a little bit about, we're going to offer some of our insight on who we think would be viable options for the school board leadership. The president role, vice president role, and clerk role. Now, I haven't ever seen anyone talk about this before. This is a very important decision, because these individuals will definitely guide the direction and the vision of our school system. So let me get back to how I share my screen again. Okay, here we go. Share. Share this. Share. All right. So we're going to start here. I'm going to first give you the individuals that will be our, be our board of trustees come January. Now, this is important because why? Oftentimes, people don't even know who their school board trustees are. Y'all, I called a school in 2024, and I asked them who their school board trustee was. It was a person in the school. And they told me Anna. And I was like, hmm, I'm sorry, there's no Anna on the board. But you would be very surprised at how many teachers, principals. Like, that is very shocking to me that individuals in schools don't have, don't know who their school board members are. So we're going to go through them right now. I'm going to make the, is it, can you all see it?
Yep.
Does it need to be bigger? Or is it cool?
It's fine.
Okay, cool. So we have District A, Emily Stevens. She's newly elected, so the community just voted her in. You have Lydia Dominguez, District B.
So District A is, I believe, the East Side and Henderson, correct?
Yes. Yep, yep. Yep.
District B, Lydia Dominguez. That's a part of North Las Vegas, Mesquite, a lot of the rural areas in Clark County.
That's right. Good. I'm glad. Are you looking at the map?
No. Where's the map?
You're doing good. The map is, I will show, you know what? And that's a great question, is since we're learning together, let me just go ahead and show that really quick. So if you go on ccsd.net, which I'm on, and if you, this is ccsd.net, okay, everyone? You can go to trustees. And then when you go to trustees, you go to trustee general information. And then, once you go to trustee general information, you just scroll down the page. And then there's a map. That map better be here. Where's the map? Here's the maps right here. Then you have trustee district maps. And then you can click on each map and see where their districts are. But you're right. So far, Mr. Rodney, you've pretty much said the districts and their spaces. So you all can go ahead and do that. And you said, and District A looks like, here's District A. So this is Emily Stevens' area.
Yep. So it's southeast Las Vegas and part of, well, it looks like all of Henderson. I think it might even have some boulder as well.
Yep. All right.
And that would be former Lisa Guzman's area. Because sometimes people just connect the faces or former trustees with those areas as well. So that would be Lisa Guzman.
Thank you. Good, good. And please, you all, please chime in. Like, I want this to be all of us talking and engaging. So thank you so much for that. So actually, what we'll do then is after I look at the face, after we show the person, we'll just go to the map so that people can just do that. So, the next person is District B, Lydia Dominguez. So we're going to go to the map. I'm going to go ahead and click off of District A. And then we'll go to D.
The interesting thing about District B is even though it tends to be North Las Vegas and the northern tier of Las Vegas, it reaches east to west, as far down as El Dorado on the east side. So it's a sizable district that is full of diversity and variety. So even though it does include the northern part of North Las Vegas, Las Vegas, the rural, but it also comes down into Sunrise Manor.
Yep, here you go. Here's the map right here. Good job. There it is.
And she would be Katie Williams, formerly a District B, Moms for Liberty candidate.
Yes. And I'm glad that you mentioned that she's a Moms for Liberty candidate, because those people are not for, I don't think they're for children, but they are definitely not for the diverse community, including black people.
Right, right. So we're definitely going to have to put them to test.
But that's also, the same could be said for the first one that you mentioned was District A. A former Moms for Liberty candidate who disavowed her association with them during the campaign. But is, was that really a thing?
We will see. My understanding is that, according to what I've heard her say, that she's not a part of Moms for Liberty. But what we're going to learn, after we talk about what we're going to learn on January, what day is the vote? Is it the third or the sixth? Tracy?
I'm sorry, it's the sixth.
What, we're going to learn a lot about our board on this first vote. We're going to learn a lot about the board on the first vote. Then for District C, we have Tamika Henry. And let's, woo-woo, let's go to the map for Tamika Henry. District C. Here's District C right here.
So District C would be trustee Young and Shirley Barber, because most people are associated with them. And we had the person who was not doing anything as the board president, Evelyn Garcia Morales. Well, I'm not saying anything that's not true. I mean, I told her to her face, and now, anyways. But anywho's, that's District C. There's a whole lot of history between District C, C and D, for sure.
So the historic West Side, is that part of, that's districts, part of North Town and the historic West Side?
Yes.
Yeah, we only have time for truth telling here. You know, I mean, yeah, we just have to, because the the level of disinformation and misinformation is so deep right now that we, we have to combat it. And the only way to combat it is by telling the truth with our facts. All right, so we got Tamika Henry in District C. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy, for giving us that history behind it too. Because often, people don't know who the person is replacing, or, you know, the next individual and the history behind it. So our next, let's go to the next person. Brenda Zamora is District D. So Brenda Zamora is a returning trustee. Let's go to her map.
And Larry Mason was before Brenda Zamora and Irene Sepeda and Kevin Child. So that would be the former person for that seat.
Awesome. We do have some people in the live I want to shout out really quick. Belinda Denise, good shout out. Samantha Peterson, thank you for joining us, Samantha. Samantha said, call it how it is. That's what we're going to do. Thank you, Samantha. Okay, so District D, there we go. Now, we're going to move on to, oh, my goodness, I didn't want to delete that map, did I? Yeah, I did. The next school board officer, Lorena Bisioti, she's District E. And let me show you the map for District E.
And as you're pulling up the map, wasn't she also a Moms for Liberty candidate?
Yes, yes.
That's Lola Brooks. That was, that's your district.
Yes, this is
You're the, when did we say we were going to call you?
Y'all.
The honorary school board trustee.
I fell out the other day, because someone came up to me and was like, Camila, because I, you are, I promise you, all I do is talk about education. It's like a part of me. I'm thinking about the school board. I'm trying to figure out how to make these TikTok videos talking about the school board. And while I was talking about the school board, doing some of my research, CalDune was like, girl, you should call yourself the self-subscribed Vegas trustee. I about fell out. I said, you know what? And will. Like, I just, oh, that tickled me so, so much. The self-subscribed Vegas trustee. Well, here's District E, y'all. Here's District E.
District E is this sort of the Summerlin Desert Shores area, but goes pretty far south, too.
All right. And like Tracy said, Lola was in that seat before. Let's look at District F. So the school board trustee in District F is Irene Bustamante Adams, District F. And we're going to look over at her map. Here's her map.
That was Danielle Ford.
Yes. Awesome. Oh, I love this.
And that was a big loss, losing Danielle Ford, even though she has moved up to the higher education level now.
And I'm going to go ahead and go delete this map off the page, school board. Oh, I love this show. I love learning. Linda Cavassos, District G. Let's go look at her map real quick.
And if I remember correctly, I might be wrong on this one, but I think it was Erin Crainer.
Before, before Cavassos?
Before Cavassos, yeah. I think it was Erin Crainer.
Okay, big shout out to trustee-elect Tamika Henry. She is in the Facebook Live. All right, y'all. So that's the District G. Now, let's get into the nitty-gritty. Y'all. People have been, what we have been hearing from, there's been a lot of conversation around who these board officers should be. It has been to the point where a trustee told us that she's hearing, she's getting phone calls about this. So I was like, oh, okay, because Tracy and I, we're already on, we're counting votes. That's what we do. We trying to count votes so that we can see if we're really going to have a district that's going to move forward in a different direction. Our assumption, this is our assumption, and Tracy, you can jump in when you want, is that we might have a split board again.
So Sister Camila, share with the folks what these positions are?
All right, let's do that. Yep, because that's what we were going to do. So yeah, because I know, you know, I'm about to go off on a tangent. That's what I wanted to do. I didn't mean to turn that off yet. Did I already turn it off? So let's go through the positions really quick. Thank you for reminding me, because I went off after we'd seen all the pictures. All right, let me share my screen again. Because that was the main purpose, was to go over the responsibilities. Let me go back to it. Thank you, Mr. Rodney, for bringing me back focused, because I was about to go in.
We're going to have time for that. We go in.
Okay, cool. All right, good. Perfect, perfect. So let's stay focused on this. Okay, so again, my friends, if you go to ccsd.net, again, you can go and you go to trustees, and then you can find the governance policy. So right now, I'm in the governance policy section on ccsd, and you can find all the governing policies. You can even see GPO 3 is board responsibilities. And we're going to go ahead and look at the responsibilities for the president's role, which is GPO 6.
Hey, Sister Camila, can we actually look at the board's responsibility? Because maybe people don't know exactly what the board is supposed to do.
Exactly. So let's look at GPO 3, which will be the board responsibilities. And that's right here. And it was last, so it was adopted July 26, 2000, last. And let's see, the last revised was 2018. So there may be some need to, you know, maybe look at this a little bit. But the specific responsibilities, as an informed agent of the people of the Clark County, to ensure appropriate district progress towards the board vision, strategic imperatives, pledge of achievement, other support strategies, and the advancement of learning for all students. So the board is supposed to, accordingly, the board shall exercise informed oversight for the achievement of the board vision, strategic impairment, imperatives, pledge of achievement, and other support strategies, effective programs, processes, and operation, and improve learning for all schools. They're also, look at this part, number two, retain responsibility for family community engagement, y'all. Hello? And dialogue relevant to ccsd stakeholders, including but not limited to reporting progress on the board vision, all of the things that we said above, strategic impairment, imperatives, pledge of achievement, other support strategies, and local bond programs. Retain
Java took over.
Absolutely. Yeah, because he kind of took over. The board is supposed to develop written governed policies that shall address educational outcomes, progress, process alignments, balanced governance, board and superintendent roles. So you all can go ahead and, you know, read those more in depth. But educational outcomes, progress, program, process alignment, balanced governance, board superintendent roles.
Boy, that's a big one right there.
Which one?
The board superintendent roles, that's been a constant struggle and area of animus between seemingly all of the stakeholders.
Absolutely. And we might as well go ahead and read that, since we're saying that's, and that has been the key point. How responsibility is delegated to the superintendent and monitored by the board. And written protocols.
Go back to number, if you don't mind, go back to number five. Read number five. Uh-uh, stay right there. Read number five and see if it'll make you laugh.
Assure successful superintendent performance by monitoring performance based on achievement of the board vision, strategic imperatives, pledge of achievement, and other support strategies.
Never happened.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things that, as we're going through this and the folks who are listening, now that you know how to find this, the thing that gets mentioned over and over again is the board vision. Now, I never hear them say what the board vision is, and I'm going to have to, like a lot of other people, I'm going to have to read the board vision to see if the board is even close to the vision, or if the board should have a different vision. But it does come to that over and over again, and that seems to be what the measuring stick is for everything else.
Absolutely.
Not to jump ahead.
Oh, no, you're fine.
What do we plan on doing in this upcoming year to start attending these meetings at this board meetings?
Well, I tell you what, Walter, we're going to, she's going to dive into that, though, but she wants to get some of these responsibilities and stuff out of the way. And so then we can know who is who and how we should address them, when we should address them.
Okay, so we've touched on some of the board responsibilities. So you all can go back through that. You see it. It's up here. I'll even just stop it here for a little, two more seconds. Over those who are looking at the Facebook Live, you can pause it. Okay?
Can we pull up the superintendent's obligation?
Yes, let me, let me, yes. I think his, are his in, are they in there? Let me look at that one. So these are all the board responsibilities. I got to check and see if there is one for the superintendent. Okay.
It may not be under the board. It might be.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So now that we've moved on, that was the board responsibilities. Now, we're going to president's role, okay? This was last revised in 2017. So let me see how long this, four pages. Okay. So the president of the board assures the integrity of the board's process, and when called upon, represents the board to outside parties. Accordingly, the president shall have the following roles and duties. To ensure that the board behaves consistently with its own rules and those legitimately imposed upon it from outside the organization by enforcing that. Meeting discussion content shall be on those issues, which, according to the board policy, clearly belong to the board to decide or to monitor. Information which is neither for monitoring performance nor board decision shall be avoided or minimized, and always noted as information. Deliberation shall be fair. Deliberation shall be fair, respectful, open, thorough, timely, orderly, and specific to the issue. Deliberation shall support the balanced governance, individual board member characteristics as described in GP four point one, Board Members Conduct and Ethics. Um, number two, to make decisions that fall within topics covered by the board policies or governance process and board superintendent linkage, with the exception of employment or termination of a superintendent and where the board specifically delegates portions of this authority to others. The president is authorized to use any reasonable interpretation of the provisions in these policies in acting within following powers and limitations. The president is empowered to chair board meetings with all the commonly accepted responsibility of that person, ruling, recognizing speakers, and following Robert's Rule of Order. The president has no authority to individually make decisions about policies created by the, by the board or operations dictated by federal or state statutes or contractual agreement. The president has no authority to supervise or direct this superintendent. The president is responsible for the creation of the annual meeting calendar, which is to be derived from the board-approved perpetual calendar. I'm gonna, yeah.
So the, the part that sort of stuck with me is the president's role not to supervise or, what was that, that it says? Has no authority to supervise, uh, the, or, or direct the superintendent. So it just made me wonder, if the president doesn't have that authority and does, I guess it is the board in general, and is that where the issue is? Because if the board is split, the superintendent, kinda like a kid, just plays the one against the other.
Absolutely. So the board has, you know, they make, they have to vote on how they're going to direct and supervise. But let's also keep in mind here that let's see, when, when was this revised? This was twenty seventeen? Let's also keep in mind here that this was last revised in twenty seventeen. So the new board may have some additional revisions. And then we also have, when was, um, where are we at? We're in twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, so the last people were in twenty twenty. So there may, I don't know what the, what the board is gonna decide about responsibilities, but we always have to keep in mind that depending on what was happening with that old board that revised this also kinda sets a precedence for where we are today. But how I understand that is that the president is not the person that's gonna, you know, be directing the superintendent solely by themselves. So the president's responsible for the creation of the annual meeting calendar. The president may represent the board to outside parties, uh, announcing board state positions and stating their decisions and interpretations. The president may delegate this authority but remains accountable for its use. The president may call special meetings of the board of trustees. Um, I'm just gonna kinda go through that quickly. If the majority of the board feels there was not sufficient business to come to the board, items listed on the agenda can be deleted at the, at the meeting during adoption of the agenda. Um, the president has the responsibility to appoint trustees, members to board committees, community committees, and outside agencies as specified by NRS or as designated by GP fifteen board committees. The president may sign all papers and documents as required by law or as authorized by the action of the Board of School Trustees. In the absence of the clerk and the vice president, the president may appoint another board member to assume clerk duties. The president acts as a coordinator for the evaluation of the superintendent and the private legal counsel to the Board of School Trustees. To ensure the delivery of a board-approved annual progress report as described in SC twelve, an annual report to the repub, to the public, state of the schools. Have we seen that? Wait, to the public by the superintendents to include the following items. I, I, maybe they have, student performance growth data, information about school, school district strategies, programs and operations, revenues, expenditures, and cost of major programs. To ensure that concerns regarding school board members, superintendent communication, or implementation of policy and procedures shall be addressed with the superintendent through a balanced governance, progressive response process. The president also to ensure that the board members who fail to follow governance process, process policies either during or outside of a board meeting shall be addressed using the balanced governance process, progressive response process. The president also has to ensure that board members receive ongoing annual training and effective governance. Board members shall participate in ongoing annual self-assessment, summative assessment, and external evaluation and effective governance as described in item fifteen of GP four point two. All right, so we went through all of that. That's a heavy job, y'all. Let me see if it has anything. Okay. Do you all wanna go on to the vice president?
Sure.
Yeah.
Go on to the vice president. Now, I don't have to do it that way. I think I'm gonna do a high-level overview. Where's my vice president, y'all? VP, where you at? Okay, let's keep that one up there. Let's go back to this. No, let's go back to this. Okay, hold up, y'all. Where'd I go? Governance policies. All right, let's go. Let's keep this double, duplicate this page. All right, so now we're gonna go ahead and go to the vice president, and I'm gonna put the clerk up here, too.
Tamika, are you asking for us to look at balanced governance? Cuz I'm multitasking over here. Are you asking us to look at balanced governance? Or?
I think she's just mentioning, oh. Okay, so look, y'all, here's the vice president. It's one out of one page. So that'll be quick, one out of one. The vice president acts to ensure continuity of leadership on the board in the absence of the president. So they shall perform all the other duty, duties assigned by the board. The vice president shall serve as the parliamentarian for the board and accept responsibilities as designated by the president to ensure fair, open, inclusive deliberations by all members and board adherence to accepted Robert's Rule of Order. The vice president will be providing training on Robert's Rules of Order within thirty days of being elected as an officer. In the absence of the president, serve in the capacity and assume the duties of the president, including signing. So assuming, we already went through the duties of the president, so that's it. In the absence of the clerk, the vice president serves in the capacity and assumes the duty of the clerk. Should the office of the president become vacant, fill the vacancy until the election of a new president. Okay, the vice president serves as the facilitator for the board office calendar, serve as the facilitator to ensure the board adheres to the district's communication plan and that messages relayed from the board are reflected of the board's vision. So let's go to the clerk really quick. The clerk's role, page one of one. The clerk acts to ensure that accurate records of the board are kept and that administrative functions of the board are accomplished. So the clerk should, shall cause to be kept a full, accurate record of the proceedings of the board, draw out orders for payment of monies belonging to the Clark County School District, subject to the written directions of the board, file the names of the president, clerk, and the members of the board with the Nevada Department of Education and the county auditor immediately after the organizational meeting in January following a general election. Cause to be published a list of expenditures of the CCSD made during the previous quarter of the year. Ensure that members of the board are notified of meetings and that special meetings are called in conformance of law. Conduct the meeting of the board in the absence of the president and the vice president. Assist members of the board with completion of training for professional development as required by the law. If a member of the board fails to complete his or her required training, the clerk must post notice of such non-compliance in a conspicuous manner on the website of the Board of Trustees. The clerk must also provide written notice of the non-compliance to the other members of the board. Assume such duties as the board may decide. So again, my friends, for all those watching, you can get these board policies on ccst.net under trustees and then under governance policies. So let's be informed and let's hold these peoples to task. Any questions now that we went over that part?
Um, I think I'm gonna try to answer Belinda Denise's question. I think she's asking, do trustees, uh, receive additional compensation? Or just the standard monthly trustee stipend? I think it's just their regular monthly stipend. I don't think they get any additional funding. Well, at least not that I'm aware of, unless they, they, it's something new, but I think they just get their regular monthly stipend, whatever that is.
Absolutely.
You get the regular stipend, and you get money if you're traveling for the district.
Yes, yep. All right, so could we, do you wanna keep up these documents or stop share? Or we wanna keep these documents up while we discuss?
I, I would say remind the folks on how they can get it. Again, if you wanna post the link to it in the Facebook Live, you can, so the folks can easily get it.
Yeah, let me do that.
Okay. Thank you, Tamika.
All right, so right now, y'all, what I'm doing is I'm going to post the link so that you can get this yourself um, to the governance policies of the Clark County School District. So that in twenty twenty-five, we can do our job to make sure that we're holding our Board of School Trustees accountable. And if they're not doing the work, then we need new people in those seats. And here's the link. I'm posting it in the Facebook Live. And then also, I'll make sure that when I do the description of our talk tonight, that we will, um, I will add all of the information that we talked about today and our links in, um, the description of our Facebook Live. My computer is so slow over here on this end. I gotta get a new one. Okay. So as you can see, these roles, the role of the president, all of these roles are very important. Like, every seat is important. This president role is, as you can see, it was four, four pages, y'all. Everybody else was one-to-one. Um, I don't even know if this is a, if this is a robust responsibilities and if it really truly describes effectively the role of the president. But this is what we have. Um, I need to write that in a second. So this role as a president is very important. And the reason that it's important is because the president makes the decisions on the issue, like, so number one, um, no, no, that's not what I wanna talk about. Deciding and giving the let me say, how do I say this? One issue that we saw last with Evelyn, she would deny a trustee's ability to put items on the agenda. Mm-hmm. That's a very important role of the president. So, and we heard our community complain about that. We, the trustees complained about that. So what I'm saying is that this individual really makes a lot of decisions and leads the direction of the board. So if we wanna get into, um, I guess we wanna talk about our recommendations, what?
Yeah, um, so I guess I'll just put out the names that we're hearing, um, and people can chime in um, based on what they know or what they've heard. But what we're hearing um, is that Linda Cavassos and Irene Bustamani. Um, maybe Emily Stevens or Brenda Zamora. I know it's about three that's putting their names in, or they've expressed interest in being the board president. Um, for those on the outside looking in, we think when the board, because this is a decision amongst the trustees, uh, it should be Linda Cavassos if she puts her name in the hat. Just based off of her having the most experience right now and to lead the board in a whole different direction than what it's been. Um, and then those other names could come in as vice and clerk.
But why Emily Stevens is new to the board?
Absolutely.
Just a curiosity to me that why we would want someone new to the board that doesn't know how the operations of the board, we don't even know if she knows Robert's Rules of Order for that matter. But yet, she would, I, I just don't even understand why her name is a consideration.
Yeah, we're trying to understand that, too. That's, Emily Stevens is absolutely not a recommend. Any new person, any new sworn in for me, in my personal opinion.
Right.
A new, the new trustees, in my personal opinion, should, you know, get their feet wet, learn the roles first before they jump in um, into a president, vice president, or even a clerk role, in my opinion. My personal opinion is that the three individuals who have seniority should be the officers. I think that Cavasso should be the president. Um, and the reason why I, for me, why she should be the president is she's community-oriented. You can Google her and see that she's been in the community. She will take the time to hear what our, what the needs of our community are. If we want board agendas, she will help us to try to work through that and understand how to get items on the agenda. Bustamante, I do not recommend her for board president because she is not community-focused. I'm sorry, she's just not.
She's business-focused.
And I don't, my, from my opinion, I don't have a problem with her being business-focused, but you need to be both and, and there needs to be a balance. At the end of the day, I understand that the role of a, a school board trustee is you have to be, you're available and listening and understanding the issues from all sides of the spectrum. But for me, an absolute non-negotiable is community focus. You have to be. If, and then another thing for me with Bustamante is that she's voted way too much with the ignorance with Lola and Katie. Um, that just did not sit well with me as a community member and some other community members. So I personally just don't have a trust for Bustamante in that president role. Um, that's my thought on that for the clerk. I, I think, and then you all can also say what your odd, um, suggestions are. But I think, you know, this would be an opportunity for trustee Brenda Zamora. She's been on the board. She, um, this would be an opportunity for her to learn the clerk role and to prepare herself for other leadership roles. Cuz right now, we only have what? Those are the three.
Mm-hmm.
These then voted in trustees that we have. I could imagine, I could imagine if there's, if there's any pressure for new trustees, then that's like, that's some outside type of stuff, you know, people trying to dictate to them and tell them what to do. Um, but you really have to have a backbone and understand that. Um, you know, and be open to hearing all sides of situations. So that's my point. And then we, as we went through all of the board responsibilities, that president role is huge. Oh, my goodness. There, I, I just don't see a new person. I do believe there's diamonds in the rough, but no, take your time and learn. Take your time and learn something.
Yeah, that president's role is very critical, and especially in a time where we don't know what what anything is getting ready to look like in real time. Like, we're hearing stuff, but we really don't know what things are gonna look like in real time with the new administration coming in, you know, with Donald Trump. Uh, then we have the superintendent search. Like, there's a whole lot of things that's happening right now.
Right.
And, and they gotta hit the ground running, and they've gotta be versed on everything that's happening in education. There's really, for me, I don't think there's a whole lot of time for a learning curve. You're gonna have to just jump in and just do the job and do it the best that you can with the information that you have. And yes, know that staff will lie and not tell you the truth um, about some of the agenda items that you will have to, um, be voting on. So it, it's best to have a trustee that's the president that is as honest and as forthcoming as they can possibly be without violating, you know, any laws or anything like that. Uh, but yeah, this, this group of trustees, they have a whole lot of work a, a, ahead of it.
Now, and something I was thinking about, so the reasons that I am for trustee Cavassos as president, she's been the president before. And I think this will be a great opportunity for her to really to, um, mentor those who are willing. Um, also trustee Cavassos has done town hall meetings. She, I've seen her show up in community meetings, which means that we would have a president who is community-centered and focused. That, that is absolutely necessary. Um, I thought that the communities voted in their, their elected officials, which means for me, how I think about a person being elected official that you, you, you remember and work with, and you know, you're in community with the people who you asked for their vote, right? Um, with Bustamante, another thing that really kinda struck me about her is when the trustees wrote a letter about Katie abandoning her seat, I did not see her signature on the letter. So that, to me, that's a red flag. Um, I'm gonna make sure that I post, cause they, they may, I'm gonna make sure that I post that letter. Cause remember we're dealing in facts, so I'm gonna make sure that I get the letter and post it to our description uh, of the, of the live. I, now correct me if I'm wrong y'all, please let me know if I'm wrong. But I have not seen, uh, trustee Bustamante do a community forum, engage with the community, um, in a way that I think is.
She hasn't, it's only been Cavasso, Zamora and Bustamante.
Let me know, please let me know if I missed, if I missed it, please let me know. Um, and then with Brenda Zamora, she's very community centered, she is an organizer. She's grassroots, she understands community needs. And you know, is available in what I've seen her, she's been at community, I've seen her in town hall meetings. Um, she shows up when communities are having events. So that is something that's very impressive to me, so for me, I see her as being very community centered.
Camila, when is this vote again? When, when will they hold the vote?
January 6th.
Oh wow, so really, we have roughly a week to determine who we as the community would want to be in that position.
Absolutely, and that's why I wanted to do this live. That's why I wanted to do this and whether or not whoever could make it or not, because this will still be able to be replayed. Because it's some things that we need to think about on really community, what direction do we really want to go in?
So that right there is a pretty big thing, and I put this in the Facebook chat, is one of the things that we can look at is the past voting record of some of these folks. And were they pro-community or did they have some other agenda? Because if they had some other agenda then, they probably have some other agenda now. And we definitely, definitely don't want them leading the school board. And even any Moms for Liberty candidate, if they are actually Moms for Liberty, to me that automatically eliminates them from being in a leadership position of the CCSD, the fifth largest school district in the nation. When we know that a part of their mandate is to really take away public education.
Absolutely. Yep, definite no for them. Cause we, we don't know if, if they for Moms for Liberty, they against it, they were, then they wrote a letter saying they weren't. So you're, you're too topsy-turvy out here to be, you too unstable to be leading the board.
So they're, they're new to the board, which means they're inexperienced. Um, we know that those who actually were Moms for Liberty candidates, and maybe at the next, uh, the next, next week, we can even put up some of the mom, Moms for Liberty objectives.
Okay.
That are retribate, reprobate to how we believe uh, community engagement and simple education should be. Banning books, um, getting rid of D E I, those types of things.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, so there you have it, are there any questions? So again, community, you can go and look at this yourself. Look at the president role, look at the vice president, look at the clerk role. Go ahead and read all of the information about all of the upcoming trustees, the new trustees who will be sworn in in January. They're gonna be hitting the ground moving, there's a superintendent to find, there's, there's a superintendent to find. There's policies to update, so they're like, this is a full-time job. The Board of School Trustees is not a committee. There's a difference between the Board of School Trustees and a committee, this is not a committee, this is a full-time job. And I want us to pay attention to who's doing the work effectively, who's doing the work passionately and compassionately. And if not, roll out, roll out, roll out. Because our students deserve better. Public education is a back, a backbone of our society, I believe in it, I'm a product of public education. I'm still in school, I understand the value of education. And so does our, and so do our leaders who want to destroy it. They understand the value of it because they want to destroy it so that we are a, a community that needs someone else to think for us, tell us how to think, tell us how to vote, tell us how to live. And we owe it to our students to be critical thinkers. You know, and I'm not saying you have to be, you know, a scientist, a mad scientist and the, you know, I don't, I'm not saying that you have to go to college, but we need to have the basic skills to be able to read, to comprehend, and to do what it is that you want to do in life. And right now, there's a whole community of, I don't, what is it? Whoever these people, I don't even know what to call them really, there's a whole community of individuals who want to dismantle public education and just dismantle education as we know it, they don't care if you're qualified. We're not going to accept not having an education as normal.
And let's keep in mind that a part of Moms for Liberty's mandate is to defund certain aspects of education, um, to look at the bonds that we have. These are very important things and have been instrumental in building new schools, magnet programs, things like that. So these are areas that are often, or unfortunately, have all too often been overlooked that we really need to add focus to now.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you, you all, it's 7/11, we started late and, and we went through all those fricking, uh, policies. And we still made it through, we went through, we went through to, oh my gosh, we did such a great job today, I love sharing facts. We went over the board responsibilities, the entire board responsibilities. We showed you how to get onto ccst.net and find the trustee section to find the governance policies. We went over the, uh, president's role, the vice president's role, and the clerk's role. So you know, uh, some of them out there, not all of them, didn't even know that, so now they know, they need to send me my consultant fee. Send me my coins, okay? So we went through all of that community, so this is, we're showing you how engaged we're gonna be in 2025. And I'm so excited that you took the time out of your Christmas Eve, you're celebrating with family, your holiday time to be on this call with me, are there any last words from anyone? John Johnson, you got anything to say?
Oh no, I've just been listening, yeah.
Okay. And thank you so much to, um, Belinda Denise for being on, if you all haven't checked her out on her live, please make sure that you do. Thank you so much for joining us, trustee elect Tamika Henry, thank you so much, Tamika said thank you for doing this. Shanika Cooper, hey, so thankful that you're on. And for those of you who are just watching in the live, thank you so much for joining us. Please share this out so that our community can be informed of what's going on, our suggestions. And listen, let's move our school district forward and let's hold them accountable, let's hold our board accountable. And let's hold all of our school district leadership accountable to doing what is best for our students and ensuring that we have an educational system that is thriving. Anyone else want to say something before we close out?
So big shout out to Tamika Henry for being here. And Tamika, I hope that once you are sworn in and seated on the school board, that you will continue to use this as a resource to distribute information. Because that has been one of the biggest complaints about the CCSD is people getting information. Knowing what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, what we should be preparing for. Rule changes that impact our young people. Those are things that folks have in the past said that they wanted the district to do better in. And now that you're in that seat, I hope that again, that you will use this platform that Camila Bywaters has established. And also her newsletter that can be hugely instrumental in disseminating information to the rest of the community.
Yes, and I do want to acknowledge that, um, trustee Cavassos did let us know that she wasn't gonna be able to make it tonight. But otherwise she would have been on the live, and she's been often, and so I want to also acknowledge trustee Brenda Zamora. She also has come on and participated as well. Now them other ones, they probably watching from the margins.
And I have a, I have an announcement to make. Let's make sure that we all go out here and support whoever's in office. And again, hold everyone accountable. So we need to be at these school board meetings, these city council meetings, these county commissioner meetings. Because we don't have nothing to complain about if we're not showing up.
Absolutely.
Start showing up in a crowd, not just one or two individuals. We need to show up as a crowd, numbers matter.
Absolutely.
So we need to change our directions this year and show up in numbers.
Yes. Oh, and I did want to share out that Senator Neal posted that January 18th, the Black Legislative Caucus will be having a meeting. Um, one thing that we will be doing this year in 2025, there are a lot of education bills. We will take some time to go over what those are. Um, I would like to go to the, I'm probably gonna plan to go two times to the legislature. I definitely would like my, yeah, no, I'm definitely trying to go, I need to go two times. But, um, February for Black History. And, um, I'll also provide information on if the other, the, there, there's an Asian caucus. Um, the Latino caucus. So I'll provide information to individuals for those caucuses as well, but right now, what I do know is that the Black Legislative Caucus is having a meeting, y'all, let's show up. Let's show up to that, January 18th, I'll make sure that I post the flyer so that we can be involved, like I said, my goal, I'm, I'm watching who's oppressing and who's liberating.
And that meeting on January 18th is a local meeting down here in Las Vegas, so you don't have to go to Carson City to attend that meeting.
Okay, Tamika just said that January 6th is the oath of office invitation, so I'm not sure if they're voting for officers on that day.
Yeah, I think they do all of that in one, oh, one shot, yeah.
Get right in there, okay.
So, yeah, unless they've changed it, um, they get sworn in and they have to select, because then they get right to work, so I know for sure the superintendent search should be right on their agenda to get back into that, cause they had to put a pin in it. Um, and then the other stuff that we've heard about that's going on, so there's a lot.
Okay.
Uh, they have to get an attorney, uh, yeah, there's a lot of stuff happening with CCSD school board trustees, it's a ton of things, so yeah.
That would be a topic, we definitely, one of our top, we will talk about school board attorney too. Any last question?
Can I jump in real quick?
Oh yeah, go ahead, John Johnson.
So when you just said that about, uh, what Tamika said, I jumped on the, uh, CCSD website. And no, it, which is kind of weird to me because you would think it's the same thing like Congress, they get sworn in and then you have to swear in your officers, and in fact, Congress does it before. You know, so you can conduct business. But per their agenda, they're only doing the swearing in of Emily, Lydia, Tamika, Lorena, Batista, then they have public comments, and then they're out of there. So the only thing on their agenda is the oath of office.
Okay.
Hmm, okay, are they switching it up?
They must be having another meeting to actually do the officer election.
Thank you, John Johnson, I'm gonna make sure I get that agenda, thank you.
No worries.
Alright, any last words before we go? Cause I want to make sure y'all get back with y'all families so that it don't be Camila over there got y'all talking about education still? They gonna be mad at me y'all.
So one thing that, uh, I did get from speaking to Senator Neal is I know a lot of people have been waiting for some guidance from on high, wherever that high is, on how we're going to move forward. And there really is, we're, for the moment, we're out here trying to find our way, just us. And there may not be that broad guidance, that those direct action initiatives coming from national, or for that matter, coming from the state legislature, legislators, or even the, the parties. So this is our moment to determine how we want things to be for our young scholars. And I think we should grab the bull by the horn of that, since that's what it is. There's a void out there, let's fill that void with what we think is best for our children. Let's let the school board know who we want to be the officers and what we want to be their priorities. This is really, a- as dire as things may look, you always have to find something positive. And here's the positive, there's a vacuum. And we know from science class that nature will fill that vacuum. Whether we want it to be filled or not, with what it wants to be filled with. So if we don't want it to be filled with a bunch of things that are antagonistic towards our community. Here's our opportunity to stand up and fill that void ourselves with what we think is best for us. Now's our moment, now's our time.
That was beautiful, this, our moment, yes.
Can I jump in, I'm sorry, I know, like you said, this.
I don't, I'm not in a rush, but if somebody, if you all need to get off, you can.
So, uh, as many of you guys know, on the call, I worked, you know, in politics, like, uh, she say you don't have to be an elected official to be a politician. I actually had to tell my wife that, I said, I'm a politician, she said, no you're not, I said, yes I am, look at the dictionary, read the dictionary. But anyway, uh, this election cycle, uh, I worked for Tamika, Jovan, Twixx, and Cooper. So as we know, Tamika did win, you know, her election, so moving forward, I'm going to be helping her in the community and putting together different events. So, uh, one of the biggest things I've seen personally in the community is the backpack giveaways. So they always have these backpack giveaways, but they're always not where the people can get them. And the people who really need them really don't get it. And what you see, even with the Christmas giveaways, you see the same people going to the same different events and getting, you know, multiple supplies and stuff. So the people that really need it doesn't get the services. So for the next school year, we're gonna do something a little bit different. So we're gonna have our backpack giveaways directly at the schools, partnering with those schools. So you know how back, uh, before school start, they have their back to school um, orientation or whatever, where the kids come get their schedules and all that good stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we're going to either have a classroom, or we'll have a section in the gymnasium before they leave school, the end of this year, the, the APs are gonna send out emails to the parents, letting them know about the backpack giveaway. And then a few weeks before school start, they're gonna send out emails again, so the kids can sign up for backpacks. And then when they have the, uh, you know, the school, uh, open house or whatever, they'll come to the table and then we'll already have the backpacks, and we already know, you know, these are the kids that need it. So we're gonna be targeting one elementary, one middle school, and one high school. The elementary school is Jesse Scott Elementary. The middle school is Gibson Leadership Academy, and then, um, the high school is Canyon Springs Leadership High School. And we're gonna be trying to target 500 backpacks and supplies, uh, per school.
Okay, great idea. That's a great idea.
Belinda Denise, the backpacks with crayons and them for middle and high schoolers. Okay. Thank you, John Johnson, thank you everybody, happy holidays, whatever you celebrate, Kwanzaa, um, Hanukkah, Christmas, um, I appreciate you all for coming on and spending your Christmas Eve with us, um, speaking about a very important subject that's coming up, um, but anything in education is important to all of us, so. I appreciate all of the viewers on Facebook, I'm, I'm trying to go back and make sure I haven't left anybody out. Uh, thank you Ms. Del Rey Rose for coming on. I love you, I love you dearly. I love you, I love you dearly. Ms. Del Rey Rose is and was a part of Wake Up With My Mother, Marzett Lewis and Deborah Jackson. So I want to always make sure I give them their shout outs when, when I see them participating with anything in education. And if you ever need information, they would be the go-to people. Uh, from a historical perspective. So, uh, Ms. Tamika. Utilize them if you need, need be. And I'm gonna hush, but I hope everybody has a merry, merry Christmas and a happy holiday.
We did it, y'all. Thank you. Please run this, um, listen to it again. Let's share it so that we can be informed. And I think Mr. Roddy said it beautifully. Um, this is our moment and I really believe that. And also thank you, Assemblywoman Thomas, for joining our calls or anything that you want to say.
No, um, I'm just multitasking in here fixing, uh, Christmas dinner.
Okay, aw, look at you. Yay. Tamika, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say good informative, um, information for the community. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. That, we're gonna keep, keep, keep it going. Trustee elect Tamika, did you have something you wanted to say? Thank you for joining the Zoom. You're on mute.
I know, I'm sorry, everybody. I just, how y'all doing? I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to hop on real quick. You know, it's Christmas Eve and with my family. But I just wanted y'all to know that I really appreciate you all doing this for our community. I'm looking forward to being of service. Um, I'm looking forward to being of service. I'm excited. It's a lot that we. You know, have learned. I've, I've gone to a couple of. Sorry, let me step out because they loud.
It's okay. We, it's, it's family time.
It is family time. It's family times. Um, I've gone to a couple of trainings. It's. It's more work. Like you can do all the research in the world and I'm not even seated yet. And I know that it's gonna be more work than I originally thought. But it's okay. That's why I started clearing, you know, the pathway for that to happen. It's gonna be an interesting journey. Um, but I'm looking forward to it. But thank you all for your insight on like even the officer roles. Um, even speaking on balanced governance and what that is. And that's something that needs to be looked at. That's something that really needs to be looked at. If we continue to, in my opinion, we continue to operate under that model, we'll be going down the same path. That we've been seeing. And so, you know. And when, and I heard you all mention like, is there gonna be a split of the board? We'll be watching.
You got them, them eyes? We got them eyes out? We're gonna be watching.
Uh, no, we'll be watching. But I mean, it's like, I'm in it now. You know, it's like, I'm in it now and it's really gonna be about building relationships. Getting everyone on the scene, you know, path, keeping our students as the north star. Not about our own agenda. It's about. It's about the growth and education of all students. And so. Yeah, it's gonna be a big task. Thank you for keeping the community informed. I'm here. I will be here and I'll, and I'll keep you all updated. Thank you. Weather pending, I'll just a quick announcement, weather pending. Because I see I've been getting some raindrops. But Friday, we're, we're looking forward to having a community, um, like a community dinner, a pop-up. In collaboration with Chef Jeff at the Abado Collective. I would love to, um, see all of you there. We can continue these conversations, a lot of things that we can talk about prior to me getting sworn in. So looking forward to connecting with you all.
Sounds good. We got your back.
It take all of us. This is not my seat. It's not my seat. This is our seat. And, um, this is our district and we all need to, um, make sure we're doing our part to uplift education here in Clark County. So. Doctor, Dr. Bywaters, I thank you for all that you do.
Aw, thank you. My pleasure. All right, y'all. It's time for y'all to go enjoy your family. They mad at me. You know what? Just blame it on Camila. It's Camila's fault. Blame it on her, y'all. Go ahead and have a wonderful holiday. I think the, we might, we'll probably take a break the next time because it's December, because it's, uh, New Year's Eve. So we'll have a bye week since we came on today and we'll just repost it. But everyone have a wonderful holiday season. This is our moment. Let's, I, I love that, Mr. Roddy, that you said that. This is our moment. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna continue to model and walk out the things that we're saying and we believe. Have a wonderful evening and you can always follow me on TikTok. I'm turning into a TikToker. You can find me at Camila Bywaters three. I have a YouTube page that's gonna be starting up soon. Um, my newsletter will come out and I'll make sure that you all have all that information. Have a wonderful Tuesday. Bye, y'all.
Merry Christmas. Happy Kwanzaa, everybody.